To the April meeting of the Niskuna zoning board of appeals. Ms. Chiketti, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
Yeah.
Mr. Dolman?
Here.
Ms. Pacheco?
Here.
Mr. Daly?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Antonakowski?
Here.
Chairperson Hope?
Here. The first matter on the agenda is a review of the March meeting minutes. Has everybody received a copy? Is there any discussion on the minutes? Having heard no discussion, is there anyone that would like to make a motion?
I make a motion.
A motion's been made by Mr. Daly. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Chiketti, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Antonakowski?
Same.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes, the minutes have been adopted. The calendar for this evening, the first matter has been adjourned. So that matter will not be before the board this evening. It's my understanding that that will be re-noticed for a next month's meeting. So, Ms. Chiketti, will you call the first matter that is on for this evening?
Appeal by Angela Maza for a variance from Section 220-25B1A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 1342 Van Antwerp Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district to maintain a five-foot fence exceeding the height limit in the side yard. Fence Section 220-25B1A permits the maximum height for fences located in the front and side yards to be four feet. As constructed, a five-foot fence is located in the side yard. Therefore, a one-foot fence height variance is required. Eleven notices were mailed out, zero responses, but we received a county referral.
Skeneckity County regarding the single-family dwelling requesting an area variance to construct a five-foot-high fence in the front yard, deferred to local consideration. Signed 415-2024.
Ms. Maza has provided us with some photographs of the property and of the fence, and I'd request that they be made a part of the record this evening. Ms. Maza, will you go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Angela Maza, and the address is 1342 Van Antwerp Road, Niskuna.
Could you tell us a little bit about why you need the variance and what steps you've taken to try to mitigate the need for variance?
I decided about a need for a fence when my daughter moved in with me with two dogs. And the dog, I had nothing there that was substantial. So they were pretty good-sized dogs, and I felt I needed a fence. Also, I've had a lot of traffic through the area, and I felt, again, I needed a fence for privacy. I wasn't aware of the four-foot limit, and the fence contractor, I don't know what happened. He said he thought, you know, he assured me everything was right. And he told me he had even gotten a permit for it or some excuse. I never saw anything, that's for sure. But the fence is located up on the hill on one side, and then it scales down in front. So it's not really the entire, we had to cut the fence from the bottom in order to scale it down. So while it was five-foot fencing, it is not five-foot fencing all the way across because it had to be scaled down due to the levels.
Would it be possible to reduce the height of the fence without removing the fence?
No, I don't think so because it's already scaled down from the other one it connects to. And it just, it is scaled down, in other words. It's not all five feet all the way across. It's scaled down as it slopes down in front. I don't know if you can tell from that, but it slopes down in front.
Okay. You were indicating, I see that there's a row of hedges in front of the fence?
Right.
And is that, the pictures you indicate, obviously, it's not the, those bushes are not in bloom, correct?
No, they're not in bloom. And when they are in bloom, you know, they fill up a big space in front. You can't even see really what's behind it. There's a few places I'm going to be planting trees where the empty spaces are that, you know, we lost a couple of bushes in there.
And I saw on your application, you were indicating that there were similar types of fences in your neighborhood?
Yes, I went around looking at all the fences, and they're all like six-feet, five-feet fences around me across the street. Of course, I face a commercial property, CVS. They've got a six-foot fence next to me. They've got a six-foot fence, and on the other side of me is a six-foot fence.
Now, the issue, as I understand it, is the six-foot fence, your six-foot fence, is in your front yard.
It's not six-foot, it's five?
Five-foot, I'm sorry. It's in your front yard as opposed to the back corner of your property where it would be allowed.
Yeah.
So the other fences, and I, you know, I don't know which fences you're referring to. It's hard for me to ascertain whether they're in compliance or not in compliance with the code as it is.
Right, I have a picture here. I just brought one of the fence that's to the, I'm on Van Antwerp, so it would be to the left. And here's the fencing on their property right next to mine, which is a very high fence.
Okay, if you'd like to make that a part of the record, we could accept that if that's what you'd like to do.
Sure, I could do that, yes.
Could you hand it up so I could pass it along so everybody could take a look at it?
Yes.
I assume you don't need this back?
No.
Laura, I understand that there was another variance that we granted for the same area at our last meeting, I believe, correct?
No.
Or two meetings ago?
It was in December.
You saw that?
No, actually, it's very close, the one that's in the corner of Hilltop.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hilltop and Van Antwerp.
It's very close to that.
Yeah.
Mike? Okay, does anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions.
Mr. Latif?
Tell me a little bit about your property. You said you did scale a little bit. Can you describe the property itself? Is it sloped down?
Yes, it begins on a slope next to me on the right-hand side where there's rental property in a driveway. So it begins high there, and then it immediately slopes down to where it hits my house and by my porch. So each one of those is scaled down, each section is scaled down.
Okay, is this where the five-feet is?
Yes.
And you said it's lower than five-feet, where does that go?
I'm sorry.
Is it lower than five-feet?
Yes, it's lower as it goes. We had to cut out the bottom in order to even it up.
Okay, so what's the lowest end?
I'd say about four-six, maybe four-four, four-six.
So you could say it's between four-six to five-feet?
Yes.
That's what it is?
Yes.
In those pictures you provided to us?
Yes.
Can you, can we go over these pictures? And what are we looking at on the first one here?
Sure, the first one is my house as it shows from Van Antwerp Road.
Okay.
Across the street at CVS on that side there. And again, you can see that it doesn't really show much, and I'm going to be planting some trees in front of that where we've lost some bushes.
Okay, so is this fence right to the front of your house?
No, it's behind the porch area.
So how far is this behind that fence? How far is it behind the porch, you said?
It comes up right even with the porch. I don't know if you can tell from the second picture here. It shows that the fence begins.
Okay, I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
By the porch.
Okay, so that's to the front of your house?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And then some of these will show the graduation of, I don't know if this shows it, only shows this section here, but it shows how it drops down through this area here. This has a big slope. It may not be too identifiable, but this has a big slope in this area here.
So that fence, this is you talking about the rental properties behind it? So how high is that fence back there?
Six-feet, we measured it yesterday. Yep.
And is that fence yours or somebody else?
Which one are we talking?
Did you put that fence in?
Oh, that fence?
The six-feet fence, did you put that in?
I thought you were talking about the CVS fence.
No.
No, 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 that's the five-foot fence, but it's on a hill. It's on top there.
That's a five-feet?
Yeah, and then it slopes down, the yard slopes down.
All right.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm good, thank you. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any further questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to take advantage of these photographs. With the first photograph that's looking at the front of your house, correct?
Yes.
Right, in that area on the left-hand side, it's opened up, that's not the window, is your porch that you referred to?
You're talking about where the fence hits my house again? Is that what?
Yeah, you look at the house, on the right-hand side, you got your nice big window.
Yes.
And on the left, is that the porch that you're referring to?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
And if you're standing on the porch looking across Van Ranken, across the road, are you looking into the parking lot of the CVS, which shows, which is shown in your?
That's right, that's this photo here.
Your fourth photo, yeah, very good.
Yes.
All right, if you're standing, I don't recommend it, not literally on Van. No, don't stand on the road. Pretend you're standing close to the road but in your front yard.
Yes.
And you look to your left, that's the fence.
Yes.
And then if you look further, you see the neighbors, and is it a grayish colored house?
Yes.
All right, now, in between the fencing and your neighbor's house, is there a driveway there?
Yes, it's a driveway, my driveway.
Okay, very good, thanks. Do you recall the name of the contractor?
He was from Skeneckity, his name was Basil Dalchand.
Thank you.
Who was it?
His name was Basil or Basil Dalchand, D-A-L-C-H, I think A-N-D.
Yeah. All right, and did you have an opportunity to speak with any of your neighbors?
Yes, I did, I spoke with them. Of course, the rental place, I didn't, you know, we're in contact with them, we see them coming in and out. They've never had a problem, but I do know the owner, Sarah Zappi and her husband, and they have had no problems with it. And then on the other side, again, no problems at all, we're very friendly. They just moved there in, I think it was November, they moved there, they're new neighbors. And we put, you know, we have no problems with them, and they have not mentioned anything either.
All right, and in a nutshell, just to help me understand your position, why in your mind would a five-foot fence work better than a four-foot fence?
As I started off with, I had, my daughter had dogs. I didn't think a four-foot fence would contain them. I didn't think it would provide the privacy I needed and the security I needed because it's a road, it's a busy road, and I just didn't, I felt that it would give me more. And I also felt logistically, as we scaled down, that if we started with a lower fencing, that it wouldn't look right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Maza?
Yes.
Good evening. Just so I understand, you were told by the contractor that there was a permit for the fence?
Yes, that's right.
Is there, Laura, is there a record of a permit for the fence?
No, the fence was installed without a building permit.
This.
Thank you. Ms. Maza, how long have you lived at the property?
I bought, I lived there since 2018, and I bought the property in 2021.
Okay.
In August of 2021.
And at the time you bought the property, obviously, there was no fence there, correct?
There was an old fence that was there, it was like a chain-link fence.
Was it at the same location where the current fence is installed?
Well, not exactly, because when I had a survey done, it showed that that fence was not in compliance with the survey. So I ran this fence in compliance with the survey, which was actually on the inside of where the old fence was.
Let me be a little bit more specific.
Oh, sorry.
The old fence, where did that line up relative to your porch?
Oh.
So perpendicular line of the fence?
The same place.
The same place?
Behind the bushes, behind the, at the end of the, where my house, my porch is.
So is your testimony that prior to the installation of this fence, there was a chain-link fence at this exact same location, except the fact that you maintained this current fence inside your property boundary?
Yes, when I put up the new fence, we put it according to the survey.
Okay. And what prompted you to change the old fence and put up this new fence?
It was, it was very, I bought the house in 21, and it was very dilapidated. It was, parts of it were up, parts of it were down. They had put the post in, and some of these, the fencing was coming off the post. It wasn't put in too well.
And was that a four-foot fence or a higher fence?
I think it was around a five-foot fence, but I didn't measure, I'm going to be honest with you, I didn't measure it. You know, and it was an open chain-link.
Thank you, are there any other questions?
Just a quick one, Laura, how did this come about to us, to your department?
Complaint.
From?
A neighbor.
A neighbor, okay.
I've never had a neighbor complain. I think it might have been noticed when we had a board member come out and look at the building that I had, and maybe it was noticed at that time, but I don't know of any neighbors that have complained.
Did we get any letters saying anything negative?
No, we did not.
Okay.
Ms. Maza, I think the issue is that six-foot fences, or five-foot fences in this case, frequently come before the board. I think you alluded to the fact that you had been listening to some of the minutes, so, of previous meetings. So it's an issue that pops up, and, you know, from my perspective, I'm very cognizant of trying to not treat people in very similar situations differently. The board is typically or traditionally taking a negative view to six-foot fences. And you're in a situation, you're in an area in which this is the second fence that's come before the board in a matter of months, asking for the same thing. I think that the complaint is indicative of other people in the neighborhood saying, why can one person have it and I can't have it? And that concerns me. So that's just my thoughts, my personal thoughts on this matter.
I wasn't aware of any complaints.
Well, I understand, you don't come before the.
Oh, you mean the other person?
You don't come before the board all the time, but this is a very common situation.
Yes.
And it's frequently difficult, or frequently people don't get the result that they're looking for before the board. So I'm just cognizant of that and concerned of treating similar people in similar, very similar situations differently. And I'm not suggesting that your situation is necessarily the same, or in my mind, there's differentiating factors that aren't always present. So, that being said, is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard for or against this application? Having heard no one from the public wishing to be heard, is there anyone who would like to make a motion for or against the application?
Mr. Chairman, I looked at this property. And I looked at this property. There's no adverse effect, and the neighbor, she's right on Van Antwerp Road, which we really don't have a lot of privacy. The contractor didn't give you any information on the height of the fence or anything. And as a homeowner, and correct me if I'm wrong, you would have no idea, am I correct?
That's correct, right.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion that we accept the applicant. And for the reason the homeowner, the contractor never told her any information. She's a homeowner, are you a widower too?
Yes.
She's a widower. She doesn't know, there's no way she would know. And she's only been living there a short time. And that's a, that's a problem.
Yeah.
It's a problem for the homeowners, because when they come before us, they say, well, the contractor did it, and he never said anything, that's a real problem.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So I'm going to make a motion that we accept the applicant the way it is.
A motion's been made to approve the variance application. Is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to second the motion, and I'm going to go a few, go over a few things, and the reason I have to, because as we mentioned before, we're very strict on the six-feet fence on this board. The applicant has mentioned that there was a fence on the property before, and she replaced the fence without knowing that she has to come to the town and get the permit and get the rules of the heights. Unfortunately, the benefit here cannot be achieved another way without costing the applicant a lot of money to go ahead and do this project. Is it going to cause any undesirable change in the neighborhood? I don't think it's going to, I think it looks good from the picture what I see. It's still not a six-feet, it is reduced to five-feet and to four and six inches, scaling it down per the applicant. Whether the request has adverse physical or environment, it's not going to have any adverse physical or environment on anything. Was it the alleged difficulty created by the applicant? Again, there was a fence there, the applicant did put a new one in there without knowing, and as mentioned by Mr. Daly, Mr. Basil did not give her the proper information for the heights and so on. For all these reasons, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to second the motion to approve it.
A motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? Having heard no discussion, Ms. Chiketti, will you call the roll?
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Dolman?
I'm going to vote no, and the reason is, is that I do find that the benefit can be achieved by other means. I, the bushes in front would provide privacy. I would not, my personal view of it is not that it affects the negative character of the neighbor or affects the character of the neighborhood negatively, but the fact that there was a complaint that brought it in tells me that some in the community would disagree with me. It is substantial, but less so certainly than other applications that we've had. There's no reason to think there was an environmental impact. And this, while I absolutely empathize with the applicant as far as what she was told by her contractor versus what really happened, ultimately, it was your contractor, ma'am, so this was self-created. And I share the chairman's concern with offering different interpretations to different people. So unfortunately, on the whole, I'm going to vote no.
Ms. Pacheco?
I'm going to vote yes, and I'd like to also mention that with the property as presented is unique, but similar to some other properties because of the size of the CVS lot that's directly across the street from you. With that kind of commercial property immediately adjacent yours, I also empathize with the concerns that you've brought before the board. I'm glad to know that it's not five-feet all the way across, so that also helps mitigate the need that you are requesting the variance for. So on the whole, I am voting yes.
Mr. Daly?
I go yes, all the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
This one was a close call for me. In addition to the comments made by those who have indicated they are voting in favor, I'm also appreciative of the fact that you have indicated to us your intention to fill in and flush out the shrubbery to further mitigate the five-foot fence.
Yes.
Based upon the totality of the testimony and for the reasons stated in that additional reason that I just mentioned, I'm voting yes.
Mr. Antonakowski?
I'm voting yes as well, I think what's, and it was close for me as well, but I think what sways me the most would be that there was a pre-existing fence with a similar location and similar height. I also think it's a unique property and that it's across from a very commercial area. And then the slope of the overall landscape is probably difficult to maintain. And, but it's a yes for me.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes, this one is very close for me as well. I, like I indicated during my commentary earlier, I am very concerned about treating the people in similar situations differently. I know that for a lot of people, they have a desire to put up six-foot fences, and one of the main reasons that people want to put up six fences, six-foot fences or five-foot fences, is to preserve their privacy for, to keep their dogs in the yard and to, you know, provide privacy for their kids. So that goal is shared by virtually everybody that comes before the board. And to tell certain people yes and certain people no, I find problematic, unless I can find unique circumstances that justify it. I will say that the fact that your contractor did not obtain a permit, that you had no knowledge of it, that you were disadvantaged as a result of that, cannot play a factor in my determination because we don't want, you know, that's unfortunate, but we have a standard that we have to apply. And from my perspective, that's not part of the standard. As I believe Mr. Dolman indicated, you hired the contractor, so therefore, if they didn't act in compliance with the code, that's unfortunately imputed upon you. That being said, I have voted in favor of fences as Mr. Antonakowski had indicated consistently in situations where there was a replacement of a pre-existing fence. My thought process being that we would not want to discourage people from removing pre-existing fences that were eyesores and replacing them with something that was nicer and improved the character of the neighborhood. So that weighed heavily on my decision-making process in voting yes. I do believe that, as someone else on the board indicated, the benefit can be achieved, could be achieved by planting additional shrubbery, which would mitigate the need for a fence altogether. But balancing that against the lack of an undesirable change in the neighborhood, the unique circumstances surrounding the CVS across the street, and the lack of any physical or environmental effects, coupled with the attempts that you have made to mitigate the overall size of the fence and taking you at your word that you're going to take further steps to plant shrubs to further hide the fence. I'm going to vote yes for all those reasons. So congratulations, your variance application was approved six to one.
Thank you very much, thank you all of you, thanks.
Ms. Chiketti, will you call the next matter?
Appeal of Kevin Kellasnik and Abby Mossad Taster Kellasnik for a variance from Section 220-53B and Section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 1422 Valencia Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district to construct a sunroom partially within the side yard setback. Section 220-53B allows an addition to a non-conforming residential structure, which brings the addition into a non-conforming side or rear yard no nearer to the side or rear yard than the existing structure and no nearer than half the distance specified in this particular residential zoning district. Section 220-13 Schedule IC requires a side yard setback of 15 feet. The existing house is five-feet from the sideline. Therefore, seven-feet-six inches becomes the minimum required side setback. As proposed, the addition would be five-feet from the side property line. Therefore, a two-foot-six-inch side yard setback variance is required. Fourteen notices were mailed, zero responses.
The applicant, please state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm John Van Ort, I'm the architect, Studio 7 architects. The owner here is Kevin Solisnik.
Mr. Van Ort, you're going to be speaking for the owner tonight?
We'll probably tag-team it.
Okay.
If you have questions, you might want to ask him directly, I don't know the answer to.
All right, just for your. All right, just for your, for the record, what's your current business address?
It's 6966 Fuller Station Road, Schenectady, New York.
Okay, can you give us an overview of the need for the variance? What steps were taken to contemplate alternatives that wouldn't need the variance or at least the?
Yeah, I was contacted by the owners. They recently bought the house and there's an existing deck and there was a tree that was cut down. I'm not sure if you touched the tree down or somebody else did, but so they would like to build a sunroom and a mudroom to go out to the garage area in the backyard. So we looked at it and I said, well, we can go up to 7.6 based on the zoning, but that would only give them about a 10-foot wide by 16-foot room. And it just seemed narrow that they would like to line it up with the existing house that is already there with the five-foot setback.
Let me just ask you, based upon the diagram or the site plan that you see on the screen there, the existing, or the pre-existing deck was located in the area where the addition is proposed, correct?
Correct.
And how much larger is the addition from what was originally there as a deck?
Same size.
Exact same size?
Within inches, yeah.
Okay. Because I thought you said there was a tree there also.
Well, yes, if I can.
Sure. Well, if you could just grab the microphone, Mr. Van Orte.
You can keep it with you because no one else is here.
Okay. I'll try and stay away from the screen. So there's a tree stump right about here that, so it jogs in a little bit and comes back out around that tree. It's probably about a four-foot diameter tree.
So this was one of those trees that was incorporated in the original deck?
Evidently, yes.
And if the owner could step up?
You think you'll need it?
Sure, can you tell us a little bit about what you intend to have the room for? It's a sunroom, why you need the width, as is contemplated in the plan?
Sure, so we have a Cape style house. It's myself, my daughter, she's eight, and then we have a dog that was supposed to be 35 pounds is almost 80 pounds. So room is kind of tough to come by in our house. We love our house very much. We've contemplated moving on or finding something bigger for us, but we just love it so much. And this seemed like the logical next step for us. So as you can imagine, as our daughter's growing and as our dog grows, we're looking for any little bit extra space that we can find.
I think Mr. Green is indicating, if you could just state your name for the record and address, that's what Mr. Green.
That's what she said. Oh, man.
No, it is. We know who you are.
All right. Kevin Solisnik, 1422 Valencia Road.
Thanks, thank you. First of all, what kind of dog do you have?
He's a Bernadoodle.
A Bernadoodle?
Well, he's supposed to be a mini Bernadoodle.
But he's not so many.
He's not so many.
Okay. Are there any other questions for members of the board?
I have one, Mr. Chair. Because this is coming so close to the side yard line, what have you done to address any concerns with drainage, the water coming off the roof of the structure as compared to what was there before?
It'll have a gutter system that'll take it back and drain it back to the backyard.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. The, I could also mention that when I looked into this, Clark Henry mentioned, or Henry Clark, saying his name. His, okay. That it was good I looked into it because the existing deck was never permitted. So he said, it's good that we want to get rid of it.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question about the gutter. Would the gutter be in addition to the roof edge that seems to be hanging out a little bit in one of the submitted drawings? I think it's ZB4 there on the left-hand side. There's a little bit of the edge.
Yeah.
So the gutter is in addition to that?
Yeah, it's only a four-inch gutter. I mean, we may have the, on the cape, on this cape, the overhang is flush with the side, so it would basically be four inches over.
And you said that that gutter will be leading to the backyard to prevent?
Right, will have a downspout toward the rear side and then down and then out to the backyard.
And have you spoken with any neighbors, heard from neighbors at all?
Sure, so my neighbor who immediately to, if you were facing the road to our left, we have spoken with her. She fully understands what we're trying to do. She actually encouraged us to do it.
And is there a, it seems that there's a garage behind the house. How far away from the addition is that going to be approximately?
It's probably about eight to nine feet, thereabouts. It might be a little bit less. It's hard to tell the survey.
And there haven't been any drainage issues in the back of your house or the back of the property?
No. No.
In the area between there, is that grass currently?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Green?
It's probably me, so if you'll just be kind enough to bear with me. With regard to talking to the neighbors as you're standing on Valencia Road and facing in front of your house, was your testimony a moment ago about your neighbors to the left?
To the right, facing our house to the right.
And the folks that are facing on the right are the ones who would arguably be most impacted?
Correct.
Okay. And the footprint is the same?
Correct.
The footprint's going to be the same? I got it. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for members of the board?
Just one last question, Mr. Chairman. Does the house have a basement?
Yes.
And the addition is not going to be?
No, it's going to be on piers.
Just up like where the deck is and it's going to be even with the house floor?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I was just clearing my throat.
Okay, are there any other questions? Having heard no question, no additional questions from the board, are there any members in the public who wish to be heard for or against the application? Having heard no members of the public wishing to speak, is there any member of the board that wishes to make a motion for or against the application?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dolman?
So I bike by your house frequently with my similar-haired little son who, I'm assuming your kid goes to Hillside, probably goes to school, my kid. I'll tell you also, so knowing the character of that neighborhood, if we eliminated all of the houses that had non-conforming additions, there would be nobody living in Old Niskuna. The character of the neighborhood is rambling additions to small houses. So all that said, I don't find that you'll be able to have the benefit by any other means. I don't believe that this will affect the character of the neighborhood at all. I would actually call this substantial just because you are coming so close to the property line when the setback is so wide. But I think that's mitigated by the fact that it's on the same footprint as a existing structure. I don't, since the drainage issues have been addressed, I don't believe there's any reason to think that this would have an adverse environmental impact. And while this is self-created, that is not necessarily determinative. So on the balance, I would vote to approve the variance.
A motion's been made. Is there a second to that motion to approve the variance?
I'll second that for all the reasons stated.
A motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Having heard no discussion, Ms. Chiketti, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
Yes, for all the reasons stated. And I just want to say, thank you for taking care of the water issues because these houses are very close to each other.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Daly?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Among other things, it was very important to hear from me your testimony that your neighbor who will be most arguably impacted by this does not object to this. Yes, the houses are tight, but you're on the same footprint and for the reasons stated, I vote yes.
Mr. Antonakowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Hope?
It's unanimous, yes, for the reasons stated. The variance has been approved, seven, zero. Are there any other further matters before the board this evening?
Yeah, I got something to say. You know, these contractors come into town and they homeowners like this woman that was just here. I mean, she doesn't know what five foot nine or 72 inches or any of that, I could see that. If the town could send a letter out to the whole town saying, if you're doing work, have them put, file a permit if the permit is needed. I mean, this is an ongoing problem.
So, I mean, essentially, we do. We have newsletters where we tell people what they need building permits for. There's a welcome pamphlet from the supervisor that goes to everyone who buys a new home that has a whole section about what you need a building permit for. And the information is pretty relatively available. I do see it as a problem, but I think in many instances, it is a choice of not knowing.
Is there a way for the zoning board to send a letter to the paper?
You can. It's actually quite expensive to send letters to the entire town. It'd probably be something we'd have to budget for in the next budget cycle. But, I mean, it's certainly something that we could do.
Well, I think my question was more about sending a message to the newspaper that would print it, not an individual message to every homeowner.
Oh.
Who reads newspapers anymore?
I do.
Well, Laura, you said you said you send them newsletter, I thought.
Yeah, yep, we do. You know, you have to be subscribed to the town's email to get the newsletter so that that goes to a select population. But the new homeowners basically get the same thing that's often in our newsletter, which is a list of what you need a building permit for. And we do try, we've even put, occasionally, the town lets us put something in like, you know, water bills, which do go to every single person, and we have put something like that in there before.
Yeah, Laura, I was just going to suggest that when there's a mailer that's going out, like maybe water-related.
Yes.
That might be something that we could tag along on there, just reminding people of the need. Because it does seem to pop up with six-foot or fences in general quite often.
There are towns that do not require permits for fencing. So, I mean, there are sometimes legitimate not understanding. Some towns don't take fences for, don't take permits for fences, roofs, siding. Niskuna does all of those things.
Right.
I mean, I've been thinking about this issue as we sit here. I'm personally more offended by the fact that there's contractors potentially out there telling residents that they have gotten a permit when they have not. I've never looked into the issue, but as I sat here, I was thinking that perhaps it would be worthwhile to look into whether any other municipalities have enacted local laws that create liability on the contractor for failing to get the necessary permits before doing the work.
It seems like they have a privilege of doing work in Niskuna. That would be something that they would, they should be aware of.
Or at least check to make sure that, I mean, most of these people are probably doing this on a fairly regular basis and know to at least check to see if it's a requirement.
I would imagine a lot of, I would imagine a lot of the probably biggest offenders here are people who this is, they're not necess, we're not talking about like large licensed contracting firms.
No, we are sometimes.
Talking about someone we got out of Craigslist.
No, we've had issues before, you know, with Lowe's subcontractors.
So Lowe's subcontractors, yes, like Sienna Fence, Backyard Fence, Mariahville Fence, couple, like you say, those bigger ones. I think they're very consistent about making their homeowners get the contracts. But like the name that we heard tonight, I've never heard that name before. And sometimes the Lowe's contractors are kind of not as well-known subcontractors. And we do run into the Lowe's contractors.
I will say that we have had applicants before who have said that the contractor has told them of the situation and they have directed the contractor to go ahead and do it anyway.
Well, yes, that happens too, but.
So, I mean, that's as self-created as you can get, I think.
What, the question, Laura, you, you've been doing this for a long time. What do you think would be an option for your office to go about doing something that getting people to get permits or make them aware?
Well, you guys don't see the large volume of permits that are taken, right, out and complied with.
That's what I'm saying.
You're seeing like the kind of the random ones that had some problems, but I would say the majority of fences are properly permitted. It's just an occasional one here and there that doesn't get their permits.
There's some selection bias here. We only see the ones that have problems, so our perception is there's a lot of problems.
Yeah, I do think that when we do like a mail out or when we do reach out, I like to provide that list because we take more permits in this town than a lot of even adjacent towns. And so that can be confusing to people. So I do like to get that information out, you know, whenever we can. And I don't mind looking at trying to do it as, you know, another one of it. But, you know, we'll actually find fences are not as big of an offender as interior work without a building permit. Fences, I think, in some ways police themselves, and we do end up getting a fair number of them caught. What we run into the most as problematic without getting building permits is, you know, remodeling and finishing the basement. It's an absolute nightmare. So many people do it without a building permit and it's dangerous.
So I think we have some ideas to maybe follow up with, follow up in the future in terms of mailers and local laws, and maybe that's something that we should table and address maybe in six months and see if we have any.
Yeah, if I can get a mailer out or something, I can make sure I update you guys and show you what it looks like.
That'd be great to keep us in the loop. I think everybody would appreciate that. Any other matters before the board this evening? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right.
It's not bothering me. It's just been on for some weeks.
Oh, yeah.
It's been slipped for a while, so.
Yeah.
It's good.
It's been slipped for a while, so.
Yeah.
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 It's been slipped for a while, so.